I'd like to call the committee, the whole meeting to order, let the record reflect it is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, at 6:02 PM. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation in Public Act 101-0640, which amends the requirements to the Open Meetings Act due to COVID-19 pandemic. Although remote attendance is an option for board members, all are present, thus we do not need to confirm the audio. All the materials for this meeting are available on the Village's website, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. Once I, the chair, have a list of all public commenters, I will call on each person present at the meeting and afford them three minutes for their comment. Further time, up to an additional three minutes, may be granted by motion of the Village Board. The public was also provided the opportunity to submit a request until noon today by email to the Clerks Office at TillingPark.org, or by placing their written request in the drop box at Village Hall to participate publicly via a live telephone call at the relevant portion of the public meeting. Written comments will not be read aloud, and finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted via a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady.
Present.
Trustee Brennan.
Present.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
President Gluck.
Present.
Very good. Item number two, is there such a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on November 2nd, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number two, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number three, consider amendment to the liquor code. Hannah?
Yep, I will take that one. Having worked closely with the liquor code the last several years, there's just been things along the way that I've noticed that are sort of outdated, or, you know, just in need of revision to better suit our needs and operations sort of in modern day. So I went through, made some recommendations, talked it over with the mayor and local liquor commissioner, and then also had our attorneys review. So attached to the board packet was the red line version for your review. So just to highlight some of the changes that we are looking at. First and foremost, just within the definition section, we added a few and clarified some language within them where there were some confusion over the past few years. General cleanup within the application requirements and process clarifications, things along those lines. The license classifications, I believe we have 29 license classifications right now, and there's several of them that we just don't use and just aren't relevant to, you know, our current practices. So we took a couple of them out, and we cleaned up some language within the classifications. And then we did add two license classifications. So the one is a beer garden license. We've run into issues over time, and Kimberly can attest to it. When someone wants to add sort of a beer garden or outdoor patio, we don't really have any requirements set in stone. So we wanted to kind of give ourselves some parameters to work with. So when we did have a request that came forward, again, we have something to go off of. We did also add a UV2 license. So we currently have a UV license, that's our truck stop license. The state code currently allows for 24/7 operation of video gaming at a truck stop. Locally, we do not, so the addition of a UV2 license would permit 24/7 gaming. And this sort of ties in with the next item, so I can talk about it further there. The next item on the agenda. In terms of the fee schedule, each license classification within the language, it stated the fees. So to just make it easier, I took the language out of each individual license and added a fee schedule so that it was all in one place. And I think something that we really want to have a discussion on tonight is the fees. I couldn't tell you the last time that the fees had even been updated, and looking at, you know, different comparable communities and whatnot, and knowing the internal handling of it, you know, the fees are just low. So it's never easy increasing fees, especially after a COVID year and whatnot. But I did sit down and recommend various fee changes, so we can talk about some of those further here tonight. And then lastly, the State of Illinois Liquor Control Commission did approve delivery of alcohol permanently, largely because of COVID, so we just added some language in there to sort of reflect and match what the state is doing. So those are the highlights. I guess I want to go back to the fee schedule and see if there's any questions or comments in that area. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to review some of the recommendations.
Yeah, so Hannah.
Go ahead.
Just looking at the fee schedule, did we consider just kind of leaving alone kind of the non-for-profit organizations?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. I did recommend some minor increases there. Having some further discussion, it's, you know, there's only three non-for-profit licenses and three church licenses, so, you know, given their status and whatnot anyways, if we want to leave those alone, I'd be comfortable leaving them alone.
I'd be happy with that change.
Okay.
I agree. It's a good suggestion.
And then I would just add one more thing, too, just sort of as a reminder. We did recently amend the video gaming fees. We lowered the video gaming fees per terminal for the establishments and added the terminal operator fee. So hopefully some of these liquor license increases, they will be offset by lower video gaming fees for those establishments that do have the video gaming as well.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
Going over all that, and there was a lot to read, you did an omen job trying to get through it all. I know I needed a drink to read it all, so. But the fees that you were talking about, some of them are 50%, if not more. Is that to catch up with the surrounding communities? Are we that low, or what?
Yeah, they were, and I know I didn't provide the comparable sort of information that, you know, research that I did in the packet. But, you know, we did look at neighboring towns. I looked at Oak Forest, Oak Lawn, Olin Park, Schaumburg and Rosemont in some instances, given sort of the nature of some of their entertainment facilities and whatnot compared to ours. And even with these recommendations, we still are lower than some other communities. So I would feel comfortable putting them where they are. Hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, and one other point, you're looking under the requirements that the owner has to have for their staff and everything else, and they have to take that program. I didn't see anything in there if they're charging to have that liquor, I can't think of the word of it right now, Basset?
The Basset Certification.
Basset program, yeah.
Yeah, so that language has been status quo. I didn't make any changes to that. It doesn't designate who has to pay the cost of it. Basset certification is just standard. The State of Illinois has resources for it. I think classes are 50 bucks a class, if that, if not free in some instances. I'm not entirely positive. At the end of the day, the onus is on the establishment, right? It's they have to meet these requirements if they want this license. So, you know, hopefully they are the ones paying it, and they're not making their employees pay it, but that's something that we don't really overstep and get involved in.
Well, I know you're right about the online course, that you can, some are for free, and some are $50, and some are even more than that. But how would an employee know that you can get it for free, or that maybe the owner is giving them a snow job to make them pay for it, yet they're required it to be, you know, should we put something in there that this is?
I think Basset is just $75 across the board.
Or something.
No, I don't know.
I'm pretty sure, I was checking the State, the Liquor Control Commission. I think it's 50 bucks. I can circle back with our attorneys and maybe talk on it. Again, it's something that's pretty standard. It's not something we really get our hands in, or that most municipalities get their hands in.
Probably be over-regulating at that point, Bill. When we're stepping into the relationship between an employer and employee, the requirement is that they have the training. That's what we, that's our job, is to make sure they have it. Once they show it to us, I think that's the end of our authority here.
Okay.
And just to add to that, when they get that certification, it's theirs. So it doesn't go with the establishment, it's theirs. And then they are fully liable as the employee for any violation that occurs in their duty.
Right, honor 21, or over served, or whatever it might be.
Yeah, so that falls not only, that falls on the employee, but that certification goes with them. So if they leave that establishment, they could go anywhere within that three years that they're certified for.
Okay, just trying to protect the employees. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Any other questions?
I have some questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Couple things. One, I wanted to find out, can we charge, can you, the fees for video gambling, when you have, you know, craft brews and then craft brews with video gaming, can they have a higher fee?
That's a good question. So it's not addressed here, because this is solely addressing the liquor licensing fees. It is addressed technically in the video gaming side of things. So it is, as of January, currently as it stands, it's $1,000 per terminal that they have to pay. So they are being charged in that regard. Again, we amended the code, so we did kind of split the fees, so to say. It's going to be $600 per terminal for the establishment, and then $750 per terminal for the terminal operator. We have to look at that a little bit more, but that's how they kind of end up paying more in terms of the video gaming. I don't know. Hopefully that answers the question.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like the people with the video gaming are getting a huge benefit over those that don't have it.
Sure.
I mean, I'm a little concerned with what we're coming out of, and now we're going to double the fees on our businesses without gaming.
Sure.
But I would like to see, people with gaming should be paying more. I mean, they're getting a huge benefit. I have a couple more questions. One second here. Is there a report we can see that just shows the differences of what people are bringing in? I mean, I don't have any idea how much a hotel compared to a bar brings in.
In terms of revenue?
In terms of revenue.
Yeah, we can work with the financing.
On the alcohol, you know, just what we can chart on the tax revenue of the alcohol.
We can definitely circle back on it, yeah.
And then the only other question I had was the club. And I did talk with Pat this morning about most of understanding that. But do we then charge, do they report taxes in on that alcohol when they sell it to the public?
Yeah, Pat shared your question with me. It's something that I'll look into further. I wasn't aware of any differences, but it's a good question.
Thank you. That was it for me, thank you.
Mayor, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Hannah, for your work. You did end this.
Hannah, I'm sorry, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Thank you also. I thought it was great that you were taking this fee schedule out. And all your changes seemed pretty right. The only other question I had is the new beer garden.
Sure.
Will now, a location that has, like a bar, who has a beer garden, have to pay both?
So the way that we intend for it to work is for it to be a supplemental license. I don't have that going into effect until January 1st of 2023, to give us some more time to work through whether or not we're actually going to grandfather the current ones, or if we are going to ask them to add the supplemental license. So we're putting the parameters in now, but giving ourselves a little bit more time to work through that.
Anyone else have any other questions? Hannah, does this just give us greater control as far as the beer gardens go? As far as ours, is that the theory behind the thinking?
In terms of a lot of things, actually, I might actually let Kimberly take the floor on that one, too, because her department's really the one that runs into trouble in this regard.
Sure. So when I first got here, we didn't really have anything. The challenge we were finding is that it was regulated through the liquor commissioner's office, but when it, we were finding things were getting built, other things weren't really being taken in account from a building or a planning perspective. And when we tried to dig up to see what was actually required, it was an old policy that we found and never codified, and we just think, you know, as businesses like to operate, knowing what are, what is the expectations. And so Hannah and I, for a long time, have been talking, we just, we should really just have this codified, so when businesses come in, they know what the expectations are. Because usually with outdoor dining, it's a case-by-case scenario, depending on where it's at, you know, downtown versus not. You have residents that might be nearby. You might want to have additional screening and things like that. So we put some basic parameters in, and at the end of the day, you guys can also tweak it. But we think this will be easier, so when businesses come in, we know what the expectations are. In most communities, I find any outdoor dining is actually triggers some special use or something for that very reason of traffic noise, but we weren't going to that extent.
So yes, more control.
Very good. Excellent. Well, this is going on December 7th?
Correct, yes.
Agenda? So do you want motion, or are we going to rehash it at the next call?
I don't think that there's any significant changes. I think everyone's pretty much on board, so I don't think I need to come back to a call. I'll just kind of finalize, you know, some formatting and whatnot within it, and I'll change the, I'll leave the non-for-profit and the clubs, or the clubs and the churches alone in terms of the fees. And then the final draft will be before you on the next board meeting.
Yeah, Bill, this would just go straight to the board from here.
Okay, very good.
I'll make a motion to move this to the December 7th board.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll, please?
Roll call for item three, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number four, consider a class UV2 license for Lenny's Gas and Wash. Hannah?
So as I started to mention, within the code amendments, we added a class UV2. So just essentially another truck stop license that would permit video gaming 24/7. We had Lenny's approach the mayor's office seeking 24/7 video gaming. Again, it's technically permitted for the state, but locally, we just haven't approved it up until this point. So this would just be for the 183rd location. It would not be for both locations. You know, one of the points that Lenny's had made is that they actually, you know, tend to see less problems when there's more people around 24/7, if it's going to be an operation of that nature. So if the UV2 license is, you know, it sounds like it'll be approved within the code amendment, so this is a request for them to essentially change their liquor license classification to a UV2.
Can I add to that, Bill?
Sure.
And so the board knows as well, Hannah let them know that they will not be able to receive, they can apply if they want for Harlem Avenue, but that's out of the question. We're not, we, you know, when they annexed them in, that was all part of the, you know, the whole conversation. I think, you know, Bill Brennan and Mike Mueller and I worked hard on that with the residents, too, on the annexation, and that was the agreement we made. They will not have 24-hour gaming. 183rd, like Hannah mentioned, is, it's literally, it's all commercial. You know, they've had a couple incidents there just late at night, and they don't have, you know, enough staff there. As anyone knows, like Chief has said before in the past, the more people brings, the more people in an establishment brings less problems. And so that was kind of the reason when Hannah brought it to me, that I was, you know, supportive of it. It's all commercial. It's near no, it's not near any residential. And so, just so everyone knows, so if he came back and applied for Harlem Avenue, it wouldn't even make it to the board, because I wouldn't even bring it to you guys.
Very good. Any other board members have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So right now, they don't serve alcohol 24 hours.
Correct.
So this would allow them to serve alcohol 24 hours?
So I, actually, the way it's written, it just says video gaming. I will clarify with our attorneys, because I know that, you know, some language says that alcohol has to be sold, so I can clarify, but I think the intent is largely for video gaming.
I believe the code, though, is they have to have both.
Correct.
So this would, I mean, that's, I'm very concerned about that. We're going to start serving alcohol 24 hours a day.
Serving or selling?
You're not serving, you're selling?
Okay, so, sorry about that.
No, I'm assuming it's retail sale.
Right, so people could come in and out on 24 hours a day, no?
Yeah, there's people that work second and third shifts. They get off in the middle of the night. They would pick up their six-pack and...
Can I?
Well, you stopped, so that's why I was just finishing. So go ahead.
Go ahead, Diane, finish. Go ahead and finish.
Could you, so right now, they are not selling 24 hours?
Correct, right now, they are not.
This would open that all up.
So I can confirm with Paul, you know, the way, our intention of this and the way it is in the code is amended, is it just says video gaming. It doesn't speak to the alcohol sales for the specific license class.
Hannah, they're currently, they're currently 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM as it is. So you're only extending it from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, just so the board knows.
When did it move to 2:00 AM?
It's always been that.
But when we had the meeting here with the residents, and they asked for it to be, I think, 9:00 or 11:00, and we did give some time, it wasn't 2:00 AM.
You're thinking of, you're thinking of the one on Harlem.
You're right, Bill, thank you. Yeah, I would like to know, because I'm, I wouldn't, I would be a no for 24-hour alcohol sales. If we want to be the town, go back to being the place that, you know, best place to raise your families, I just think this is the one in the wrong direction.
I think what he's requesting is that the gaming be extended for 24 hours, because it's a safety factor in his mind, that there's going to be people in the store, and the stores are open, and he has it in other areas, Diane, is my understanding, where he has the gaming going 24 hours, but not the liquor sales. And that's permissible under the statute for a truck stop, and I think that's what he's asking the village to approve, if I understand it correctly.
Yes, just to clarify again for the board, so there's no misunderstanding. They operate 20 hours a day with the gaming, 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. He's asking to go an additional four hours. That's it.
For the gaming, not for the liquor sales.
That's a definite? There's no liquor sales?
That's my understanding.
I will confirm, that's, yes, that's right.
Because I thought the state code allowed, you know. Okay, I'll wait for you to come back.
So the state code permits it, but locally, we're allowed to be more restrictive. So that's why I'm saying locally, we are saying that it is only for video gaming. I will confirm that it is permissible under the state that we only, that we go that route, but that is what we are looking to move forward.
Very good. Thank you, Hannah.
Thanks, Hannah.
Any other questions from the board? Very good. Is there a motion to move item number four to the village board meeting?
It'll be on December 7th, too.
Okay. Such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item number four, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
No.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number five, everyone's favorite topic. Consider reviewing the liability insurance and our workers' compensation.
Our favorite topic, yes. Thanks, Trustee Brennan. So I know we had a pretty solid discussion at our last committee of the whole. Since then, some things have changed, so we just wanted to bring it back before everyone, and really just sort of, you know, present two options, so that way we have some direction on how to move forward. So option one, and I'm talking about the memo that you all received today as well. So option one presents it side by side, just for ease. This was included in the packet backup. But this is looking at both ICRT and IML. If we were to go with $100,000, workers' compensation deductible. For IML, it's pretty much zero across all of their lines, except for property that's 500. ICRT has some other minor deductibles included in there, so you would see some costs, but, you know, we'd be coming down from that $300,000 workers' comp deductible. So you see the premium set at $982,000 for ICRT, or $995,000 for IML. At that rate, IML would guarantee, would have a two-year rate guarantee, and they are offering to waive tail coverage, which is an amount of $50,000. So, you know, looking at this option, you really can't go wrong either way, you know. We could stay with ICRT if we were looking at going to $100,000 deductible option. You know, I think that is a reasonable price there. Looking at option two, you may recall at the last committee of the whole, our IML had mentioned a min-max option. So we hadn't fully presented it to the board, because we were comfortable with some of the other options that were being presented. But following, after I submitted the backup to the board to go with the packet, ICRT had actually given us another option, and sort of, it's very similar to the min-max option that IML started to talk about before. So we've been going back and forth, kind of looking into this option more, exploring, you know, potential cost savings and whatnot. So that's what you see as option two presented before you. So the min-max, the way it works, so IML presented us essentially $0 deductibles across all lines. The minimum, the premium, is $919,000. So that $919,000 is made up of $533,000, sort of, think of it as money that we pay our claims for, or claims with. And then the other pieces of that are sort of administrative fees and reinsurance and all that good stuff. So if we have a claim under the min-max, we wouldn't pay any, because it's a $0 deductible, we wouldn't be incurring any of those costs unless it went over the $533,000, you know, sort of, again, that claim fund that we have, that we pay under that premium. So that's sort of how the min-max works. So if it goes over that $533,000 on a paid, anything we pay would be dollar, dollar, dollar for dollar over that. ICRT, what they presented was a $1.2 million sort of max option. So it's similar to the min-max. They came down to zero on the workers' comp. They have some other deductibles, though, again, the, you know, $5,000 on property, $1,000 on general liability. So they presented, you know, the cost would largely be right about $1.2 million, but you'd have some other costs, minor costs worked in there. So looking at this, we also kind of took a look back over our previous four-year history and did some cost analysis. So that's what the second chart in the memo is. If you look at it, you see some of our costs incurred on claims over the last four years, and you can just see that if we go this route, there would be some cost savings. You know, we've done our due diligence. We've kind of gone back and forth looking at this. Staff would be comfortable recommending the min-max option with IML, you know, if the board is comfortable going with the $0 deductibles. So with that being said, I don't believe anyone from Alliant is here. We do have our folks from IML here. I can turn the floor over to them, but again, just kind of keep it in mind, you know, do you want to go with $100,000 workers' comp, or zero across all lines, and kind of know the costs, you know, know what we're bargaining for, having a little risk built in there. But yeah.
Thank you.
We'll leave it at that if there's any questions that we have.
No, that's great. Thanks, Hannah. You know, and Dave and Brad, I know, you know, if you guys want to elaborate a little bit more on the program here for the board, kind of the min-max option, we did have a lot of meetings on this. Hannah and myself and the mayor, and, you know, it's a really unique program, and I think it's something that, you know, really could save us some premium dollars. I think it limits our exposure. It puts a cap on that, essentially, is what is limiting our exposure. And, you know, we're going to get first-dollar coverage. I mean, what we had before was a large deductible with these workers' comp claims. I mean, we have cops, firemen, public works, employees. These are very physical jobs, and that, you know, that injuries are going to happen. So I think this is a good program. I, you know, appreciate all your guys' work on this, and I know we spent a lot of time on it, so, you know, I don't take it lightly with my joke earlier, but that's, and I appreciate, Dave, if maybe you can elaborate on the program a little bit more than we've already discussed, so.
I'd be happy to. Thanks for having me back. Before I start, I'd like to introduce Brad Cole. He's our managing director of the program and the executive director of the Illinois Municipal League. And Aaron Golden will be, he's your member services rep, and I'm the account manager for the RMA program. I'd be happy to answer as many questions you have, but I'd just like to talk about the min-max a little bit. Staff and the mayor, we did a lot of work trying to design and really tailor the best program that saves you the most money. I think we all came into this saying, this is going to be a large deductible program. And every time we ran a different deductible, we ran, gosh, I want to say 15 or 20 of them, different combinations, the min-max always seemed to be the best option when it comes to your losses and what you'll pay on average. And if I can just give you a feel for it, on a large deductible program, it makes sense. So if you have $100,000 deductible, you pay the first $100,000 out of your pocket. You're guaranteed to pay on every claim. Min-max turns out on its head. It says, we're going to pay the first dollar on every claim, up to a level, if you want to consider like a glass, when you fill up that glass, you have $533,000 in your glass to pay claims. But we're paying them dollar one, versus the village paying them dollar one. So it's typically good, almost always better for the village that way, because you know we're going to pay, and you may not pay. The other advantage is, there is a maximum. On a large deductible, you may have one claim, or you pay $100,000. You may have 10. You don't know. In the min-max, we max out and say, after you get over a certain amount, you won't pay any more. So if you have a terrible year, God forbid, you will never go above that maximum amount. If you have a terrible year in a large deductible, and have a bunch of large deductible claims, you don't know what you may pay. So at the end of the day, I think... So, at the end of the day, I, I think the, the village came to the conclusion that's the best option for you based on average cost, as well as to limit your exposure and let you pay the least amount going in. If anybody has any more questions on that, I'd be happy to elaborate.
I'd just like to add though, that, you know, insurance is a lot of large numbers. And when we looked at the last five years, it's really kind of the magic number. You know, we had the water meters in 2016 and 2017, we had Buckeye, which were huge exposures for the village, you know, those were, those were big expenditures. Historically speaking, we're gonna save money. So these are, every year we're saving, we're saving $100,000 to $200,000 in exposure, we're hitting, getting hit with those claims, you know, we're, we're paying out of pocket, that's what we've been paying that $300,000 deductible these last three years. So I think this, this program really kind of minimizes that, good years, we're gonna save a lot of money. It also limits our exposure and our risk, so I think, you know, this, this makes, this makes a lot of sense for us. So with that, I'll open it up to, to you guys and see if you guys have any other questions or if you want to add anything. Or, you know, Mr. Mayor, if you want to add anything to, feel free.
Thanks Bill. I'll be brief. First, I just want to let, let everyone know, Dave Niemeyer is in the house, so be on your toes. He's trying to hide in the back, but he can't. But joking aside, thanks Dave for the work you put into us with staff and, and like Hannah said, depending on what policy you choose, I don't think you can go wrong forward with any of the policies you decide to go with. You know, the first one that you mentioned, like I said, if you were gonna go with 100K, I think you, I think you should stay with our current carrier. If you decide to go with like what Bill was discussing about a zero deductible, two, as you would say, turn it on its, on its head, the min-max is different, that nobody offers. So then I would say if that's the route you guys choose is to go with IML. I will say, Hannah, you did an excellent job on this. She was working probably the last, I forget, I don't know, month or so, month and a half, two months with Horton as well, tried to get some prices from them. And even Horton, you know, and everyone has said, this has been a very difficult process because of 2017, there were some bad claims prior to all of us, you know, being on the board, thank goodness. And, you know, that kind of has skewed the numbers for some of the carriers that want to, that want to bid on this and, you know, and is, I, I think everyone has felt the pain trying to go through this because of one, one bad year. But just want to say, thanks Hannah for all the work you did.
Trustee Mueller?
Yeah, I'll just say, the IML min-max program looks the best to me. I think that captures everything you said, the, the risk exposure and kind of the guaranteed money, so I'm in favor of that one.
Very good. Trustee Galante?
The same, actually, I repeat everything Trustee Mueller said.
Anything questions down there? Right in?
None by me.
I appreciate the time putting into this and explaining it all, and I agree as well.
What's that? I don't know about that, no yoga.
May I make one more comment?
Sure, go ahead Dave.
I think one of the big differentiators between our program and ICRT or any other program is this gentleman sitting right here, he is the CEO of the program. I know he calls me at all hours of the day and night, and I appreciate that, and I know all the mayors and village presidents have the opportunity to call him as well. And Brad was very involved in coming up with the pricing and how we structured this program. And it's, it's a great advantage to you for a number of reasons. One is that you can go right to the top and get a decision made. Number two, Brad is, Brad and our program is here to protect all municipalities. We take defense work very seriously and we want to defend those claims that are defendable, not just for you, but for every municipality in Illinois. So that is just another advantage you get with our program. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that was, that was out there and we'll be here to help you.
I did have one question, Bill, if I could ask real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
How will, with it being a min-max, how will we budget for something like this?
Well, we're, we're essentially already budgeting this, I mean, we're, we're experiencing some pretty high costs, so it's not gonna be much different than how we're already budgeting, so the hope is that essentially what's already budgeted will just come down from that.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else you guys want to add? Dave?
Unless, unless you'd like more details.
Very good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Well, I will, yeah, I will, I'll make a motion to move this, item number five, option number two, the min-max program to the village board meeting.
If I can interrupt, we're gonna need to have a special board meeting for this. It's not on tonight's because we didn't know which way the board was gonna go. The policy year ends December first, so we need to have a special board meeting sometime next week just for this item so we can formally approve. But if we can have a motion to move it to a special board meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, I already sent out the date and time, I believe it was the 22nd?
Yes, November 22nd.
At what time? Six?
Six PM if that's fine.
Yeah.
November 20th, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move, I, option number two, the IML min-max program to the special board meeting on November 22nd?
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
We'll call for item five, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Item number six, consider contract with Point B Communications for development of a marketing campaign. Donna?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Brennan. Last month, we were fortunate enough to have a great group of stakeholders that got together to complete our discovery session or regard, with regard to our tourism marketing, it's a, it was kind of our SWOT analysis. And as a result, we have a document that is on our website, which I have forwarded to you already, which kind of outlines our competitive advantages and the, ultimately, the voice of what Tinley Park's brand is going to be. Now that we've identified these key pieces, our next step is to kind of take that message out and, and start publicizing it. And to accomplish this, our next step would be to develop the creative and the messaging for that. So what you have in front of you on the consent agenda, agenda this evening is the request for a contract with Point B Communications to complete the creative and develop the ads and the entire campaign that we'll be taking out to market early next year.
Very good. Thank you Donna. Any questions from the board?
I'll just say, Donna, I got the chance to participate in some of that and it was really, really well done, and so I'm looking forward to this contract and what they come up with from that sessions.
Awesome, appreciate your contribution.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Donna, I just want to thank you, you, you are a workhorse. And so I appreciate all the work that you do for us and you and your marketing department, so thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any questions down there? All right, is there a motion to move item number six to the village board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Brady, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
We'll call for item number six, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
That motion will carry. Item number seven, consider Cook County Class 6B for 7351 Du Van Drive, B&amp;B Warehouse.
Thank you, Trustee Brennan. Yes, we have an existing B&amp;B warehousing business here in our community on Du Van Drive, purchased the property around 2011 and is looking to renew their classification of a 6B, which basically keeps their tax rate down to 10% for the next 10 years, and then the 11th and 12th year it ramps up. They're nearing that timeframe with their previous reclassification, which actually was granted to the previous owner, but when they purchased this, they went ahead and made some investment into the building. They are a critical establishment in the growing supply chain in the United States, the food supply chain, and they provide critical storage and distribution for industrial food ingredients that are shipped out to our major food manufacturers across the nation. But for this reclass, it would not allow them to stay in the community and continue to reinvest in the building, that they would like to continue to grow their operations. They've indicated some future renovations of installing some LED shop lighting, some pedestrian doors, ceiling insulation, dock curtains and rear yard paving and repurposing. This hits our incentive policy checklist in that this is a location we've identified in our community as a troubled area that but for these reclasses, it would not allow businesses to occupy and make the necessary investment in these older industrial buildings. The project will enhance our area as well as the marketability of existing businesses in the community. And this did go before the Economic Commercial Commission, which they did recommend approval to the village board, as they saw this as a benefit to the community to keep B&amp;B warehousing in the area. And there, there is a clause in the reclass that in the event that they were to cease to operate, then this incentive would, would not remain. So I think there's a vested interest in, in the owners to stay here, and it was a pleasure meeting both of them and listening to Scott and Patty talk about how they really want to stay in the community. And I think this is a pretty simple and easy, easily supported, support of a renewal or a reclass, it's what it's really meant to do.
Very good. Thank you Kimberly. Any questions from the board? Nope. Any questions down here? Mr. Mayor? Nope. Very good. Is there a motion to move item number seven to the village board meeting?
Yeah, I'll move the item number seven to the village board meeting later on tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Thank you, Trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
We'll call for item number seven, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
That motion will carry. Item number eight, consider water model maintenance. John?
Thank you, sir. With the recent completion of our hydraulic model, this request is to continue maintaining it, so as we grow as community, any components that are changed or any development that takes place, we can continue to update it. This is already budgeted in our O&amp;M and just a request for a contract for, with Christopher Burke for $39,500.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any questions from the board? There are none. Is there a motion to move item number eight to the village board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
We'll call for item number eight, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. Item number nine, consider agreement for Dorothy Lane Water Main Replacement Engineering.
Thank you again. With the recent reception of the ARPA funding, or American Rescue Plan Act, we have a couple water main projects that we're looking to have designed over the winter to go out to bid for replacement next year. This request is for Christopher Burke Engineering to engineer a section of main on Dorothy Lane in between Okido and Odell and some of the other sections in the vicinity. This contract for design construction is for $82,818.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any questions from the board? None down there? Any down here? Nope. Is there a motion to move item number nine to the village board?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
We'll call for item number nine, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Item number 10, consider agreement for the Ironwood Drive Water Main Replacement Engineering.
All right, again, with the last item, funding that became available through the ARPA program, we have a, another water main section that we're looking to move up in our maintenance program. This is also a design and construction engineering with Christopher Burke for the amount of $92,577 in the area of Ironwood Drive.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any questions from the board? No. Is there a motion to move item number 10 to the village board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney.
I'll second.
Second. Thank you, Trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
We'll call for item 10, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Item number 11, receive comments from the public. Anyone like to address the village board?
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Jerry and I want to bring up the issue of the Christmas house. Now, this is a touchy subject because no one wants to be viewed as being anti-Christmas or against a charity that is, receives a lot of money from this Christmas house. However, I guarantee you, if any of you live in that subdivision, you would want to do something about this. Shuts down the subdivision in the evenings and on the weekends, especially when we get closer to Christmas. It's gotten worse and worse every year, and granted, this has been a, last year was an unusual year, people were looking for distractions. And it's really beautiful. It's over the top. It literally, I'm not exaggerating, lights up the block at night as if it were daytime. Now, this is politically something that I'm sure you all don't want to tackle, but I think you have no choice. Now, what I mean by that is, and the reason I'm here is to ask you to follow the ordinance for special events. I don't care how this is interpreted, this is a special event. It, money goes to charity and that's great, but money's coming out of your budget for public safety, barricades, police. It draws thousands of people into a residential neighborhood. I have been in communication with Mr. Carr since February. I didn't just decide that, you know, it's getting close to Christmas and we need to address this. I've been asking you guys to address this since February. First, I approached it as zoning, the obvious, a residential neighborhood where people are driving by to see this beautiful Christmas house. And that didn't seem to go anywhere. But the ordinance 105 about special events states that it is unlawful for a special event to be conducted without a permit. So has a permit been issued ever for this? I have a feeling that that's not been done. Now, the definition of a special event is basically what this is, an exhibition open to the public or conducted on property open to the public. And the ordinance goes on to say that you guys are supposed to, or the village is, you know, is supposed to collect money for the tens of thousands of dollars that it spends on security and barricades. I have a neighbor here that actually has pictures of the litter. There are reports of residents getting frustrated, people blocking their driveway or throwing garbage on their lawn and coming out and yelling at people, fights starting. Now, if the village wants to be liable for someone getting hurt by somebody coming to see the beautiful Christmas lights and getting in a fight with a, with a neighbor, I think you, you do have a huge liability and a huge cost involved. And the village ordinance is not being enforced to collect money for the security, but, but, you know, actually, the permit should not be issued, it's required, but actually should not be issued because the ordinance says that the event should not subject the neighborhood to an unreasonable degree of noise, littering, or parking difficulties or adverse conditions in light of the character of the neighborhood. So I ask the village to enforce this. So I ask the village to enforce this. Now, I talked to Mr. Carr about solutions to this problem. I said, can we get them to move this display to Village Hall? You guys have in your budget money you paid to some company in displays to decorate Village Hall for Christmas. Let this homeowner decorate Village Hall, donate the money and collect donations and support this charity. I'm all for that. I'll donate to the charity, but not by force. I shouldn't be forced to be in line in a line of cars to pull into my subdivision because of all the traffic. And you know, there are videos you can pull up online seeing this. Your public safety people, your police, chief of police can tell you what this is like. I had to ask the public safety person to move the barricade so I can pull into my street. I don't live on this block. God forbid I lived on this block.
Sir, I have to interrupt. You can you can ask for an extension if you're not done. Do you need an additional three minutes?
Okay. No, I don't. Just one minute to ask the village.
Hang on one second. We can, we will have to make a motion on this, correct?
Correct.
For an extension of one minute?
I need a one minute extension. That's all I need.
I have two minutes already, I think.
What's that?
I believe he was already speaking for two minutes when the deputy clerk started the timer. I'm just.
Yeah, I think it was started a little late. So I'd like to do it properly and make a motion for an extension for, for, he needs another minute, so.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. Yeah, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
So to conclude, Mr. Carr or someone in the village has asked the homeowner to move it to downtown. They can decorate the location of this not-for-profit that's in town. There are many options. The homeowner's refused. So all I'm asking is you guys to do your jobs, force this. Don't let these neighbors be subjected to this. I am a big mouth that comes and says, speaks my mind. There are a lot of people that are upset and aren't speaking their minds. But they will speak their minds when it comes down to, and is not a veiled threat. But when it comes down to voting, has the, have the elected officials protected the neighborhood? Or have they allowed this to happen? I would like to have my neighbor speak and explain her perspective on this as well.
If I could speak, I'll be here tomorrow at Village Hall. I just looked at the special use permit. I don't know if we're on the same page on that one, but I'm happy to sit down and hear you out. Paul O'Grady, I'm the village attorney. You know, I don't know if it fits exactly the way you're describing it, but I'm happy to sit down and I'm not going to debate. We don't have to debate the law here tonight, but if you want to come in tomorrow and I can meet with you and we'll go over it and I'll listen to you.
Adam Loops, my attorney, did reach out to you. He sent you an email.
I did not receive an email from Adam Loop.
All right. So Adam Loops is an attorney that I've consulted.
Might have contacted a different attorney at my office, but he did not contact me.
Okay. So I'll have him reach out to you.
It'd be great.
Discuss it because I'm not a lawyer and I'd like him to, you know, get that clarification.
That's easier for me. Thank you.
Perfect.
Sir, in the back by Officer King is Lisa Valley. Could you please leave his name and number and she can give it to Paul tomorrow?
Sounds good. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Montalvo. I'm here with Jerry. I am on the other side of the beautiful Christmas house. My backyard faces 88th Avenue where all the traffic is. I'm pretty much on the corner of 70, 174th and 88th. Not only as, you know, everything that my neighbor Jerry mentioned, I had every morning trash in front of my house, which included tampon wrappers, maxi pad boxes, dirty diapers, potato chip bags, masks, soda pot bottles. Every morning, we were picking up trash. And this is during middle of the pandemic where we had to wear gloves and make sure that we were properly not contaminating ourselves. I was hearing complaints of people urinating in their yards because they were traveling from so far in the traffic for so long. There were no porta potties anywhere because obviously according to the village, it's not a public event. So they're urinating in our in our backyards. On the corner of 88th and 174th, where a lot of the traffic is, that is where a lot of the pedestrians crossed. And I can see them from my backyard. I don't know how. There hasn't been an accident yet, but it's going to happen. There's going to be children, grandparents, parents that are going to be run over by frustrated vehicles that are stuck in that traffic. I've seen it. I don't know if maybe there are people that live in that area and are frustrated and want to go around the traffic and they're about to hit someone. And I've called the non-emergency number several times for the police to come and bring someone out to that intersection at least because I don't want to see someone get killed just by going to go see some Christmas lights. It really would be a tragedy. We cannot get emergency vehicles to our street. Thank God that no one has needed one, but on the street that I live on, Locust Avenue, it's a lot of elderly people that live on there. God forbid someone needed an ambulance, they wouldn't be able to get through. I can't leave my house from 5:00 to 10:00, which are the hours of operations of the house because I can't pull out of my driveway. There's too much traffic and I couldn't go anywhere. And that's unfortunate. And I think this is going to be a growing issue. I've seen around the social media that, you know, he's kind of helping other houses do this. And as we, my children love to drive around to see Christmas houses, so I'm not looking to shut this down. But as we went looking for other houses to drive by and we drove maybe several times, you see it growing and you see other houses wanting to do this. And they're growing and growing and more traffic. So next year, you may not just be hearing from us. You may be hearing from a lot of other neighbors in different areas in Tinley. So this is, you may not think it's an issue now, but it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from, or any comments from the village board? There are none. Madam Clerk, was there any comments received via email? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Motion to adjourn, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. We are adjourned.